Sheriff, you here Rick?
I'm ready.
That's right, 10 o'clock. Mr. Steve, would you mind opening up the word of this morning?
Bow with me please. Most gracious having the Father in our midst today. Thank the Lord for your blessings, alive to God. Well, I just ask you for a special blessing for each and every person in the family here in this room today. We thank you for your love, your mercy, your grace, for the most wonderful gift of salvation. Well, I just ask you to go with us today as we conduct business. In this meeting with your God that you give us wisdom and knowledge and understanding and that we may conduct this meeting in a godly manner. I just ask you to give us forgiveness for these things in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, first on the agenda this morning is county administrator items. The first one of those would be to discuss the approval of the county employee dental and life insurance effective for April 1st. Staying with the same providers, they're not going to have to pull it together, same providers, different administrator.
What do you have, 24 mark?
Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion from Randy, second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we need to allocate a quarter of the budget for the third quarter of the year for the following: the tax assessor collector, the sheriff, and Union County Jail. One more procedure here.
Yeah, I have a motion.
Got a motion from Chad.
Second.
Second from Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we need to discuss having Three Rivers destroy old solid waste feed building records.
That's just about, once every year or two, they'll come to us for destroy old records and in accordance with the Department of Archives history gathering. We got to, I just sent them a letter authorizing that. I guess for the 15th, 16th year.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the destroying of these old records? And a motion from Sam?
Second.
Second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have missing that's items on the agenda. We've got a resolution to perform drainage work on private property adjacent to County Road 52 and a notice for a public hearing on May the 6th. This is in your district, Sam?
Jay, is this yours?
It's County Road 52.
That's yours, that's your phone.
Oh yeah, it is, okay, I forgot.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um.
Well, had to be the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution and a notice for the public hearing?
Got a motion.
Got a motion from Sam?
I'll second.
Second from Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. Alright, we got the consent agenda this time, which is going to include the statement of expenditures for the tax office, the statement of expenditures for the sheriff's department and the jail, the mail log from the jail, claims docket payments, the board's minutes, the road department work schedule for April, solid waste register, and the medical examiner statements of fees, which is 16 for this time. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion from Steve.
I have. Medical ground, I think. I didn't get it when we.
Make a motion to approve. This is real wide. That damn.
Got a motion from Randy, a second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries.
Try and keep it straight. They give me that for all plans. Make a motion.
Randy and Steve, get the second. Next, we have circuit clerk items on the agenda. She'd like a payment of $9.25 to the circuit clerk for the first grand jury of the circuit court. Have a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Steve with the motion, Sam with the second, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, a payment of $400 to the circuit clerk for services as registrar.
Make a motion.
Chad with the second. Randy with the second. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, a payment of $400 to the election commissioners for per diem days earned.
Showman.
Motion from Randy.
Second.
Second from Chad. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we move on to the AMA 911 items. An inventory deletion of a laptop.
On Terry, hey. So they can't be picked.
Alright, I have a motion to delete a laptop from Randy door.
Motion. Second. Motion from Randy.
Second from Chad. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, emergency 911 address for building located at Diversity Bute.
Britt called me last week, somebody in his office, and they're needing an address for this spot where this new building is going. I hear them on site plan, but the road's not long enough to address it because it's stopped before it gets to it. It's three hundred more feet. And I got a grant that's going to fix the road, but before I can add an address to it, y'all got to approve that we're going to extend the road 300 feet, so I said, "Damn saying."
Who's going to county road?
I got some kind of grant going in there.
City's got a grant, I think, that's going to extend that road. I don't know if it's just end up to lax this road or really in a county road, dude.
But I can't address it if we get a road that goes in front of it.
I think it's a grant. City, city, gee, I think.
CJ, CJ has.
They going out there.
CJ ain't got a letter he can read?
The city of New Avenue proposes to extend Monstra Drive South approximately 300 feet to serve the speculative industrial building located south of Diversity Bute. This extension is proposed to be funded through a community development block grant. Accordingly, the end of the road extension will be approximately 2,100 feet south of the intersection of Monstra Drive South and Mississippi Highway 30. Existing buildings will be served by the road extension in the sewer line that's located approximately 2,535 feet south of the Highway 30 intersection. The proposed CDBG grant requires that this building have a physical address. Would you please take whatever action is necessary to have an emergency 911 address assigned to this building?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion from Randy and a second from Chad.
When you first turn.
All in favor? Motion carries. Alright, next we have justice court items. We'd like to approve Sarah Gregory to be placed on the justice court checking account.
Kaylee Hale was the one on it before, and she's no longer with us, and we have to have two people on it.
Make a motion.
Got a motion from Chad. Second from Sam. Second from Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, needed to sign a contract with Court Solutions for direct deposit on credit card payments at no additional cost to the county. Hope you hear that.
It is, um, we are already under contract with them, and they were sending us a paper check once a week, and they're not doing paper checks at all, April the 10th. So, we've either got to let them do direct deposits in our account. They can deposit, but they can never take anything out. But if we don't do it that way, we have to cancel our contract with them. And they are collecting a good bit of money for us through this company. And the contracts are approved, we approved that like three years ago. Yeah, so, they're just wanting us to send, we have to send something back. Everything I'm saying, we can either do it by direct deposit, depositing the payments in the bank, and it'll show up on our system the next day.
Y'all good?
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion from Randy. Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries.
I have another question. I've got, they sent me, let me do, I sign this, or do I need to get the board to sign?
That's what I was getting him to sign, right here, is that? Yes, yes ma'am. And I was gonna give, I was gonna make a copy and give to you, yes, I mean, give it to Rick.
Not as long as I can get it to them, I'm fine. I'm good.
Alright, next we have the sheriff's items. They'd like a payroll authorization for Stacy Ellen Thompson as a part-time trailer effective April 4th.
Make a motion.
A motion from Steve.
Second.
Second from Chad. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have a payroll authorization for Caleb Christopher Keller as a part-time trailer effective April 4th. Have a motion?
Showman.
Randy.
Second.
Second, Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. And also, a longevity pay increase for Modest Nesbit effective April 4th.
Make a motion.
Chad. Second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries.
Hey CJ, I got one more thing to add in there too. Are y'all on the, is that all of my?
That's all yours, bro.
That's it.
We just got this second quote, you know, back in, I guess it's November, we wanted these two, these Durango's. These are the quotes, and I finally got the second quote this morning, so I wasn't able to get it on the agenda. But this is to update the vehicle, that's with all the lights, the console, pretty much everything except the radio and computer. That'll be on a separate thing, but these are the two quotes, one from Con South and one from the Florida Communications. If y'all would simply approve it, it is at least in the vehicle budget already. We're hoping that those two vehicles will come in this month. Any day, you know, every week, especially in the community times, and there's about a two or three week lead time.
14,000, 16,000, 15,380. That's 15,000.
Prisoner, partition, blue lights, sirens, everything needed without, with the exception of the radio.
About $5 or a little less difference.
Do I have a motion to approve the low quote for Con South Mission Critical Solutions?
Make a motion. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carries.
Mr. President, one more thing while y'all, sheriff's line of business. I've been asked by several people in the community, y'all got the same text I got from one individual other day. I had a gentleman in my office Friday, and a lot of people coming to me asking me to speak on their behalf to the board, requesting that y'all make the decision to opt out on medical marijuana. And as a sheriff, I asked that you would do that. People been smoking marijuana since I was born, they gonna keep smoking. It's gonna be state law, I guess they go somewhere and get a prescription filled if they want to. I've been told that if you opt out, you can opt back in at a later date, but if you opt in, that you can't opt back out. So, I'd like to wait and see what it happens and how it affects some other communities and other places before we make a decision to just be all in on something. We don't know what's gonna, what are we gonna have.
Sheriff, that's actually something we were gonna address before the end of the meeting, but no, I appreciate you putting your word in. I think that the board, we're gonna publish for a hearing for our next board meeting so that, you know, public can be present and offer any comments they want. I think that the board's position right now is likely to opt out and opt back in later. So, I think that's sort of.
Before we make everybody happy, you handing out $100 bills, somebody's gonna complain if they got $520s. You'll make some folks maybe mad and some happy, whatever you do. I think the silent majority of good church-going, honest people in this county may not speak up all the time publicly, but be satisfied with the decision about that. And I know why we'd be.
Thanks, Sheriff.
So, while we discuss an issue, we'll vote for that.
Yeah, I think y'all should, you know, if we get a motion to have a hear, to have a hearing on April 21st.
Second.
To take comments from the public about opting in and opting out of the marijuana, medical marijuana. Yeah. There's not a.
Are you gonna do it at the next board meeting?
That would be the next board meeting.
That was on the 18th.
Yeah, April 18th.
Well, we can run it this weekend, next week, right? Should we like run it this week?
And you got May 2nd, too?
It may not be, but it probably is. I thought it's, it might could get in, be like right now, and you have to call it off.
Well, then I'd ask that the motion be made that if we can't get it running by the next one, that it'd be run and the hearing be on the 2nd, May 2nd. So I think we have to make that.
What's the deadline on October?
Make that.
Third.
Make third.
Make third.
We can make after our first board meeting.
Man, you gonna try to get it, see when you run. This weekend, next week?
Let me just call and say, I don't know.
I mean, I can get something emailed real quick if we can get it in.
It'd be better to go ahead and do it.
We'd prefer to do it.
I'd really get it now.
Yeah, boy.
Pushing.
Alright, well.
I second.
I'm having, it don't matter, whoever you want to form.
I got a motion from Chad and a second from Randy to have a hearing at the next board meeting to discuss. It might tomorrow night.
And if we can't get it published.
And if we can't get it published, we'll do it at the first meeting in May.
Correct.
All in favor?
Whether we make it both. Let me ask a question. That's, May the 6th pushing us by May the 3rd? If he don't, if he can't get it done today, we have a special meeting?
Sure.
You know, to make sure, to make sure.
10 o'clock.
I tell you what, I tell you what, let's just hold it up real quick. Let's see if we can find, why don't we just do a special meeting? And let's go ahead and set it today, and that way, we don't have to worry about being the day for a deadline. Things like that might just be the smarter thing to do. Uh, I'd like to, ideally, so. 26.
Big hospitals and UTA CVA or something like that.
Yeah, then we'd be fine with that. What about, what about the 26 and do it maybe, maybe in the afternoon? Cause I actually have something in the morning.
That's one week before the deadline. Cause we have the rest two weeks.
The 26, the.
Yes, May, uh, April.
I mean, I, you know, I figured, man, a lot of board meet, a lot of boards that have meetings in the afternoon unlike us, and they have 5 o'clock board meetings. Now, I don't wanna put anybody out, but I mean, maybe that's the right time if you're not doing it in the morning.
If you could do it a little early, you might as well have a turkey. I mean, I'm gonna do it 10 o'clock.
Or we could do it 8 AM, I've just got something at 10 AM.
Let's do it at 8 AM. 8 AM.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do 8 AM on the 26.
And we're 100% sure it's gotta be every time?
Yeah, it's the right thing to do, yeah.
When are we doing it?
April 26.
At what time?
8 AM.
8 AM?
Is that where is that?
Here. So you're advertising.
Are we scratching this, like, whole deal we just talked about and starting over? Alright, do I have a motion to approve to advertise for a hearing?
A special hearing.
Special hearing on April 26th at 8 AM. To hear it from the general public. Who got the motion?
Randy.
Randy, all three of, all three got seconds.
I'm giving that to Sam. I'm gonna give it to Sam.
All in favor? Alright, multiple carries.
Is the 26 Tuesday?
It is.
It's a Tuesday at 10 o'clock.
Alright, we dogged all that?
I think there'd be enough room in here for people to walk.
We can move to the courtroom if we need to.
10 o'clock, there'll be enough room.
I'm gonna do my best to fill it up.
Yeah, we'll go to the big courtroom if we have to.
We'll start here.
We'll work it out. Alright, I think we're now to Mrs. Donald.
Alright, we're going to the tax assessor stuff. She'd like a reimbursement of $106.11 from the general fund to Angel Investments.
Um, a home state split was sold at the Gabe's Tax Option in 2019. And so, that should not have been in that auction at that time. So we need to change where it says Angel Investments to Bennett Hill Holdings. There were two, I got the wrong investor name on there. So, it's a reimbursement check to Bennett Hill's Holdings for a purchase that they made at the land auction in 2019.
Do I have a motion to approve this reimbursement?
Motion.
Second. Steve with the motion, Sam with the second, all in favor?
I want to get it up.
Everybody can't get up what they want all the time. Next, we have the surrender tag list for March 2022. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Surrender tag. Got a motion?
Chad made the motion.
I second.
Randy with the second. All in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Mayor, do you need to address the board?
Uh, yes, I just had one thing, I think. On our ERVR project, which is ERVRSTP slash 0923, or in parentheses, B. We would like to use today as a final acceptance date. It's not authorizing a final payment, it's just setting up the paperwork for us to stop the maintenance, shut up, shut all, everything down so we can finish the final paperwork. It's just called a release of maintenance date.
That's on May.
Sir.
That's on May, I think.
Yes, sir.
County Road 90?
46.
Alright, yes.
46, correct?
That's correct.
I'm making a motion.
Got a motion from Chad.
Second.
Second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries.
And one last thing, found out today on our two paving projects, the overlay and the micro seal, there's a chance that I might be able to send it to the paper this Friday. The ads would run the 13th to 20th, and possibly open them on Thursday to 12th. I don't need you to approve those dates, I just need you to approve authorizing me and.
Do I advertise?
Set that as soon as they, they turn.
Well, we could do it on that special board meeting.
Have a bid open?
For the next 20, 30 minutes?
Okay.
We're actually trying to pick a day, not on board meetings, you know, because we have this issue with printing off.
Yeah, I print them all out. Do I have a motion to allow Mr. Lay to advertise for a bid opener?
Motion.
That's all I had, thank you.
Got a motion from Randy. Second from Sam.
What project you say?
All in favor? Motion carries.
Or you can let me know. What you found, oh, okay.
It's SAP 738S and SAP 739M, if that's wrong, I'll let you know if I think that's right.
Okay, good deal, thanks, sir.
Mr. Shiverdeck.
Uh, Adam Johnson, clerk, I sent you an email during the weekend asking. Madam Johnson clerk, I sent you an email during the weekend, asking for copies of two public record items, complete claims docket.
I will meet with you after.
You'll have them for me after the day, thank you.
Sorry, I did the problem.
It's fine, I just didn't know whether you had them or not. Thanks.
Do I have a motion to recess until Monday, April eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
You made a motion?
Yeah.
Steve, second. Randy with the motion. You don't want it? We're giving it to you.
Yeah.
Randy with the second. All in favor?